All right, seeing that it's 6:03, I will call the Towne Webster Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for October 4th, 2022 to order. The first item on our agenda is a reorganization of the board. What is the pleasure of the board? Would we like to nominate people for different positions? Or would, is there just a general motion to keep the existing Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk positions as they are?
I'd like to make a motion that we hold all our positions.
I'd like to second that motion.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. Okay. Our meeting minutes, are they?
Nothing's ready.
Nothing's ready, okay. 316 Killdeer Road, draft decision.
Okay, you have copies of the decisions in front of you for tonight. 316 Killdeer Road. I'll give you a brief overview. Are the applicants in the audience, do you know? Can you tell?
I do not know if they are present.
Is anybody here from, from, oh, these, oh, I'm sorry. These are the draft decisions. Okay. So, the draft decision for 316 Killdeer Road, this is for the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure to demolish the existing structure and construct a new garage. Remember that we had changed, town meeting had changed the language of Section 65028, which talked about expansion of pre-existing non-conforming uses or structures to remove that 25% threshold. Now, any pre-existing non-conforming structure that wishes to expand requires a variance. So that's why they're in front of you. We'll jump to the findings of fact. All the documents and the procedural information's been catalogued in Sections 1 and 2. The site is located in Lake Residential in Lake Watershed Protection. F2 talks about the expansion of pre-existing non-conforming structures. The applicant was present at the meeting to discuss the fact that their old garage, built somewhere around 1945, is falling down. They want to demolish it and within the same footprint seek to build a new two-story garage. And they actually want to move it further from the right side yard lot line by three feet to allow for better installation of the foundation and also to avoid damaging the abutting neighbor's property. But they will not be moving any closer to the road, which is part of their non-conformity of the existing footprint. They want to use it for storage and for vehicle storage as well. You talked about, you know, surrounding neighborhood, which is primarily residential with detached, single-family houses. Almost all of either have an attached or detached garage, so it's not unusual to the neighborhood. During the public hearing, you talked about impacts to the surrounding area. The applicant hadn't received any comments or, or concerns about the garage impacting airflow, light, all that stuff. He had received no information from any of the neighbors, no complaints. Then you did discuss with the applicant the fact that you continue, as do many officials in town, to be concerned about illegal accessory apartments and illegal short-term rentals like Airbnb, VRBO, and asked if the applicant would be amenable to a condition that would prohibit that use as part of any, any use of the space of the new garage. And they were amenable to that. They said yes. No comments from town.
Does that condition put into the draft decision?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's there. And no other written or verbal comments were received from, in either public or town departments. So, under the specific findings and conditions, you've got the, you've got the very specific F8 through F20, which relates to the conditions for granting a special permit under the bylaw. You can go through each one of those individually if you wish, or you could choose to make a motion to make favorable findings, F8 through F20, depending on how you want to roll with this. And then the next is your vote to grant, always your motions are always in the affirmative, grant the special condition, special permit with conditions. Your conditions talk about the very specifics of what's being approved, a 32-foot by 26-foot garage with a front yard setback no less than 15.4 feet, which is the existing setback for the footprint of the existing garage. And a right side yard setback no less than three feet, which is what was in the application, and a left side yard setback no less than 11 feet, as depicted on the plans. So, that's, that's the parameters of which you are approving. No portion of the interior garage space may be used for living space, including but not limited to short-term rental property or accessory apartment use. And then the next grouping of find, I mean, conditions are standard. You know, the special permit through years, it has to be filed with the Registry of Deeds. If they would like to extend, they're going to have to come back. If there are any changes to the game plan in terms of the location or the size of the structure, that would require modification. And then the very last vote is to either have me sign these on behalf of the board or have you all come into the office one by one to do so.
Okay. Is there a motion to take findings, or to accept findings, F1 through F7?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. Our specific findings. So, I didn't have an issue with any of these. It's, you know, the only question I had was with adequate air and light. It's not going to be, it's not going to create a public health or safety issue. There was no comments received. It's not going, it's not going to cause overcrowding because it's going to be used for storage. It conserves the value of the land because it keeps materials inside, doesn't increase traffic, doesn't prevent a fire hazard. You know, it's not a adversely impact on any of the municipal services. It's not a detriment to the, to the neighborhood or to Towne Webster. You know, it's, it's a shed essentially, or actually, well, it's a garage, but that's what I, I'll find. So is there a motion to grant the, actually, no, it's not a motion to grant, is there a...
You, you would want the motion to read to make favorable findings?
Right, but there's a, you said that there had to be a motion under Section 4.
Section...
For favorable findings on F1, F8 through F20.
Okay, I'll, I'll put that language in there to make favorable findings as follows. And then the language will be adjusted to ensure that they are favorable findings.
All right, is there a motion to make favorable findings on F8 through F20?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right, is there a motion to grant the special permit with conditions?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, any discussion? Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
I just want to make sure who, did you make the motion, Mr. Canoyer?
Motion.
Yes, okay. Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right. Is there a motion to direct Ms. Morgan to sign the decision on our behalf?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion second, any discussion? Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right. Draft decision for 30-point Pleasant, variance application.
Okay, so, again, Sections 1 and 2 just catalog the documentation received during the hearing and the various procedural dates and times that are required. Okay, under the findings of fact, F1 indicates that the site is located in Lake Residential in Lake Watershed Protection. The minimum side yard setback is 10 feet in that zone. The applicant is seeking a variance to install a pre-built shed with a side yard setback of one foot, as shown in Exhibit 1. Okay, well, that's a redundant sentence. We've already said that. The zoning bylaw requires a 10-foot side yard setback, so we will strike that redundancy. The applicant reviewed the application with the board in seeking to install a 6-foot 2-inch by 12-foot 2-inch shed in the side yard of her house to allow for additional storage. The proposed shed does not require a building permit due to size. And I just want to clarify that because a lot of people do question us. Anything under 120 square feet does not require a building permit in town. It seems strange, but they, we do backcheck for encroachment into setbacks. It's an odd thing, but that's specific to Webster. During the hearing, the applicant reviewed the application with the board. It was Ms. Bartholomew who was here. She stated there had previously been a shed in the same location for eight-plus years and that she wanted to replace it. She did, did come into the building office, spoke with the building commissioner, who said that she was allowed to do so because he was under the impression that the shed was pre-existing non-conforming prior to zoning. And it turns out through a separate case heard by this board that that could not be established or determined, and as a result, the variance application was required. She did, the, the shed is there because once she initiated the variance application, it froze all enforcement action on that, that zoning violation. Let's see, that summarizes essentially F3. She did present a map of side yard setbacks within 100 feet of her house, which is Exhibit 5, of many of which was demonstrated to be less than the required 10 feet. That was something she wanted entered into the record. During the hearing, the board discussed alternative locations for the shed to avoid the need for a variance. The board asked if it could be moved further towards the front of the lot and pushed over towards the house to meet the required setback, and she stated that such a move would require a front yard, would create a front yard setback violation. You discussed drainage off the roof, the shed's roof. Ms. Bartholomew noted that the proposed shed has a gutter and that all water drains directly onto her property and not the neighboring property of 24-point Pleasant Road, as claimed by that property owner, Mr. Amir. She stated that there was no drainage problem. That was, those were her words. The board then discussed with the applicant the site conditions, specifically unite, unique site conditions. Could she demonstrate, you know, if there were soil or topography or anything unique that would require, you know, an allowance for a variance? She did point out that her yard is oddly shaped. It's pie-shaped, it's 3,000 square feet in size. She stated that the proposed location is the only one that makes sense to her, given the size and shape of the yard. She was asked about soil conditions and topography and if there was anything unique about either, to which really the answer was no. The site is fairly flat and there are no unique soil conditions. The finding seven talked about the fact that if there is an existing drainage easement on the site, which you cannot place structures in, and the board had asked if she were to move the shed to that side of the property, would that shed encroach into that easement, to which the answer was no. She noted that placing the shed on that side of the house could be kept out of the easement, but that would be bumping right up to it and into the house. During the hearing, you discussed hardship. The board asked locating to another shed, locating the shed to another location was a hardship, and she stated it was a financial hardship of about $1,000 and that she and her husband were retirees and that would be a problem for them. Moving the location closer to the road would create another financial hardship as a new variance application would be required. Other locations on her property are fully landscaped for over 10 years and that disrupting or moving that landscaping would be a loss of investment. During the hearing, you get discussed nuisance. The board asked, the placement of the shed would create any noise, dust, debris, or impact the surrounding properties? And she stated that the shed was being used for storage of a mower, bikes, shovel, landscaping materials, because the house has no basement and she needed the extra exterior storage. You talked about the compatibility with the neighborhood, and sheds are typical in that neighborhood, which was demonstrated by the material she submitted, and that she further pointed out based on her analysis that the average side yard setback in the area for structures is zero to four feet. During the hearing, Henry Lane represented the owner of 24-point Pleasant Road, Mr. Michael Amir, and the, the primary gist of his conversation was that she, that the Bartholomew's have not been able to adequately demonstrate that the criteria for variance has been met and that there are other locations on the lot where the shed could be placed without requiring a variance, namely the rear of the house or in the other side yard, and that there was no hardship present. The cost of moving the shed or disrupting the existing landscaping in another location was an inconvenience for the applicant, but not a hardship. And his client is asking that they are prohibitive, that's a funky sentence. His client is not asking that they are prohibited from having a shed. He doesn't mind that they have a shed, but they should find another spot for it that isn't right on the property line. Mr. Lane also stated that the slope of the roof does cause water to run off into the hedge and ultimately onto the Amir's property. He could see no reason to move the shed, so neat reason not to move the shed to another location on the property. Okay. During the hearing, Mr. Amir spoke for himself. He said that he believed the applicant was looking to buy some time until the winter as the shed has been there for some time. The Bartholomew's have upgraded their property with landscaping and a deck, which he does not mind. He does take objection to the shed being placed in the hedges between their properties, which he says he owns, and she, she disagrees with that, but there was no documentation to verify one way or the other, who actually owns the hedge. Ms. Bartholomew noted that the hedge was on her property and that there was little to no water runoff on her shed on his property, given the fact that the land slopes towards her house and not his. No further public comment, written or verbal, was entered into the record. Then you've got your four individual findings. And then if you choose to grant the variance, the conditions are very, are the standard conditions about, you know, the period of validity, what's exactly being approved, which would be a one-foot setback, but if you deny it, then those conditions go away. So this leaves you now with your four criteria in which to make findings.
All right, is there a motion to approve findings F1 through F13 as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right, on to the, the variance. Do we want to decide this based off of the one-foot setback? We have the power to increase that to, you know, two feet or more. I, I don't know what the, what the pleasure of the board is.
So the current setback, one foot?
Current setback is one foot. My mind was that was a, a little close. If there was any maintenance that had to be done on the, the shed, that might not be enough room for a, for a ladder where, you know, it might be, that it might cause, if you have two neighbors who do not like each other, that might cause other issues, you know, if somebody has to come on on somebody else's property to, to service it or, or to make any repairs. You know, I, I think that, you know, the lot is unique and it's forcing the shed to be placed in that location because of its, its pie shape and it is not able to be moved down towards the water without causing other issues. But like the one foot, I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant to, to, to grant, to grant that. You know, I, I agree that it's a little bit inconvenient in that it's going to protrude more into a parking area. And I think that's the real reason why, you know, the shed is being placed back so far because it's maximizing that parking for.
Does that bring it closer to the street because of the way it's shaped?
Well, could you, Ms. Morgan, would you mind bringing up a picture of the...
No, this is backward from what's on the, let's see, 30-point Pleasant. Okay. Indeed. Her photos. Here we go.
That'll be slightly closer to the street. She is asking for 17 feet. You know, I, do we have the power to grant her a 16-foot variance from the front yard or?
No, because you're only considering the side yard here. The front yard, if, if you decide on a different side yard setback, a, a potential front yard variance would be required as well.
And an additional, she would have to come back for an additional front yard variance?
Yeah, because this is only for the side yard right now.
So she didn't apply for both of them at the same time?
No.
So we'll be seeing this again, essentially?
This is just for the side yard.
Unless we keep it where it's, where it is.
Yeah, we could keep it. No, that's essentially what we have to decide, that, you know, it's been there for a period You know, I, I am a little bit leery about, you know, one foot being too close.
I agree.
I know, I have a pre-existing non-conforming shed and it's two feet away from these, from the side yard, side yard. And I think dating back before, you know, Mr. Daggett and yourself, we had a case on Westwind where they wanted to increase the height of a house that was going to require a variance, and they were, I think it was a foot off the, off the side, and that was the reasoning of that board. I think Mr. Canoyer was on that, where we looked at it and he said that it would be, you'd have issues with, with doing the construction because of the proximity, you know, the closeness where, you know, if somebody were to work on it. I think two feet would be a little bit more reasonable. I think that, you know, it does look like, you know, it, she'd still have a place to park her cars, too.
I can go along with a two feet.
Two feet?
And then she'd have to come back for a front yard variance?
It appears she'd have to come back for a, she's going to come back for a front yard one either way.
Well, if she, if she puts it back, right now, what this picture is showing you is that she's kind of moved it up a little bit further just to, I don't know what the rationale was, but this would move, ah, no, no, her drawing does show that, that's the location. So she, she may have to come back for a front yard, front setback variance. I'd have to do the analysis of, but, but right now, the consideration is just for the side yard setback.
If, if, if we deny now and then have her come back and do both setbacks at the same time?
No, because if you deny the side yard setback, that, that decision stands. That can't be undone.
She can't come back with substantially the same application within, I believe it's two weeks.
It's considered a repetitive application.
So we'd have to set the sides, the side setback now and then have her come back again for a front?
It appears that's the procedure she's taking.
Your, your other option is to deny it and she would have to find another location for it on the site, if you feel that's appropriate.
She has landscaping on the side and, you know, most lots, you know, slope down towards the lake. You know, it is oddly shaped, being that most lots are, on, on the lake are rectangular. This is, you know, on the corner, so it's pie-shaped. So it's unique, but I just think one foot is too close.
I mean, you, if you were to grant two feet, then she would have to buy another shed. I mean, two, you know, you're granting her a variance, it would be up to her to comply.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good with two feet.
Okay, all right. So let's take the requirements. So based on the soil condition, shape, or topography of the land, I'll find that the, there are unique site conditions based on the shape of the lot, that it's pie-shaped. And other lots in that Lake Residential district are rectangular. It's also undersized as well. I believe 5,000 feet would be, you're, that's, that's required for a building lot, and this is 3,000 feet. So it is unique for those two reasons. So is there a motion to find that the applicant has met her unique site conditions requirement?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
Mr. Piattar?
Yes. Hardship, I'll find that... Hardship, I'll find that a variance of two feet, find that the unique site conditions create a hardship by limiting the applicant to that area of the lot. And it would be a financial hardship for her to re-landscape her yard to move the shed elsewhere. Anybody else care to make a finding? Is there a motion to find that the applicant's demonstrated a substantial hardship for a two-foot variance?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right. Public good. I'll find that a shed will not be a detriment to the public good because it's being used for ordinary household items and it won't create any dust, debris, or noise. Anybody else care to make a finding? All right. Is there a motion to find that the two-foot variance for the shed will not be a substantial detriment to the public good?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion?
No.
Hearing any?
Sorry.
Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right. For zoning, I'll find that it doesn't derogate for the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw because sheds are allowed in that zoning district. Is there a motion to find that the application does not nullify or substantially derogate from the Town of Webster zoning bylaws?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right. Is there a motion to grant the, grant with conditions, the two-foot side yard setback variance application?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right. Is there a motion to allow Ms. Morgan to sign the decision on our behalf?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right. Draft decision, zoning determination for 300 Thompson Road, and this is for, the applicant here was Mr. Valeri.
Representing the Thompson Neighborhood Association.
Yes. And the issue here was the long-term placement or storage of boats as a, under a area that's zoned for parking areas commercials, so.
Okay. Sections one and two, same thing, covers all the documentation and all the procedural information. Findings, the next finding, F1, the site in question is located within the B5 business zone. It's currently being used for the storage of recreational vehicles. I'm going to get rid of the word "storage" because I'm not quite sure that's the right word there. Currently being used for the parking, let's call it just parking for now, instead of storage, that's very contentious. Of recreational vehicles, specifically boats and jet skis, trailers, and storage of other marine-related materials such as docks and loose pontoons. And I would also add in there miscellaneous storage, because that's what's happening out there on the site right now. Let's see. There's a storage shed and a cargo container on site also used for additional storage. The site is owned by 300 LLC, which is the parent company of Lakeview Marine, which is located across the street and to the south of the site. On November 14th, 2014, the planning board approved a site plan entitled Existing Conditions, RV Storage Facility and Details Plan, Thompson Road, prepared by BC Engineering. The board voted to approve that plan and there was no appeal of the board's decision made at that time. Uses in the B5 zoning district are regulated by Section 65018A Business Districts, District Five. Permitted uses say, and there are two, all uses permitted in the Residence Two District and then all uses permitted in the General Business District Four. This is just outlining sort of the structure of the argument that's about to come. Uses in the General Business B4 zoning district are regulated by Section 65017A. The use in question is 65017A, number 25, Parking Areas Commercials. And that's how it appears in the bylaw. That's not a typo on my part. The zoning bylaw, district regulations, and associated uses as outlined in F3 and Four were in existence at the time of the planning board approved the site plan as noted in F2, and that's an important distinction. Those were uses that were on the books at the time that the planning board made their decision. The site plan approved in 2014 clearly states that it's for a recreational vehicle storage facility, a use that is not allowed under the Webster zoning bylaw. The applicants had requested that the zoning enforcement officer, the building commissioner, render a determination as to the validity of the current use of the site as it relates to the permitted uses in the zoning bylaw, which he did. Finding F7 quotes verbatim from the letter that he submitted to the, submitted to the people who requested that determination, said the property in question currently zoned as recreational vehicle storage, which means currently used as such, which is not an allowed use for the zone in which lies GB5, therefore creating a zoning violation and a non-conforming use. After reviewing our use table, it is my determination that the use of the site needs to be changed to commercial parking, which is an allowed use in the GB5 zone, therefore bringing the property into compliance with the Town of Webster zoning bylaw. F8, the applicants are appealing that determination for the following reasons. See Exhibit Number One. And this comes verbatim from their application. Do you want me to read through this for the benefit, your benefit and the audience as well, or?
What's the pleasure of the board?
It's two paragraphs. I don't mind.
Yeah, you can read it, please.
Want me to read through it?
Yes, please.
Okay. The use change of 300 Thompson Road from recreational vehicle storage to vehicle parking commercial doesn't fit. According to law, according to Law Insider, and this is verbatim from the letter submitted, I'm not sure what that means. According to Law Insider, parking versus storage is defined as, parking is used for leaving motor vehicles for a temporary time and storage is to place or leave in a location for future use. In this case, these boats are stored for six months or longer, which contradicts the short-term parking required to classify the use as commercial parking. The leaving of these boats in place for future use six to eight months later should classify this vehicle storage, which is not an allowed use in this zone, allowing this open to all B4, B5 zones in Webster to allow boat, vehicle, and recreational vehicles to be stored. Finding F9 just states the fact that the Webster zoning bylaw does not have a definition section, which is part of the reason why we're here. We don't have a definition section. It is problematic. During the hearing, the applicants, the Thompson Road Neighborhood Association, were represented by attorney George Curritzy, who presented the primary arguments relating to the use in question as follows. See Exhibit One. And I had summarized these from a, I'm pretty sure that was a five-page letter, which I wasn't going to quote verbatim in the decision. People can go back to the letter and refer to it. Ida Bay, the owners of the site, are currently seeking to expand their operations onto the adjacent property that they also own. They are seeking to modify the site plan approved in 2014, which was then classified as recreational vehicle storage. The building commissioner has determined that the originally approved plan, which classified the use as recreational vehicle storage, has caused the current use of the site to be considered a non-conforming use, which is a zoning violation. In order to bring the current use and the proposed expansion into conformance, the use should be classified as commercial parking, which was then and is now in allowed use. The applicants disagree, noting that this is an effort to rebrand the current use which would allow for further expansion. Long-term boat storage cannot be considered parking. Under the town's list of commercial uses, the most logical term for the existing and proposed use is either storage or marina, both of which are prohibited in the B5 zoning district. If it were otherwise, any commercial parking lot in Webster, even those in the center of town, could be used for exterior boat storage in the off-season. The applicant believes that this is not the intended interpretation of the bylaw. During the hearing, you asked the building commissioner to provide an overview of his determination. He noted that storage is not allowed. Based on his research, commercial parking is the payment of a fee to park a vehicle for a period of time as long as it is on a trailer and it is registered. This includes more than cars, such as boats, jet skis, and other trailers that are registered. And then he, this is where I started to, I was going back through the tape and that took a while. I have not been able to finish cataloging, no, no, that's what he said, Webster has a large boarding community and there is a period there. During the hearing, the board asked the applicant to present their appeal. Attorney Curritzy noted that he was representing both the Thompson Neighborhood Association and the Valerias who reside at 298 Thompson Road. His clients, his clients are opposed to the use classification for this site as commercial parking. And this catalogs the history, some of the history we've already heard. In June, the commissioner determined that storage was not an allowed use. He noted that we think of storage, we think of placement of boats or vehicles or other personal effects for a transient period of time. You drive into a parking lot, take care of business, and then you leave. You take it to a storage facility where it is kept. And the gist of this finding, which I'm happy to read in its entirety, but it is fairly long, is that Mr. Curritzy, along with a number of people in the audience, were very certain that, you know, common sense should dictate what is considered storage versus what is considered parking. We did get into, Mr. Curritzy suggested that the board consider the common use of the term. He referenced parking garages for both short and long-term parking, such as at airports. Storage isn't long-term parking. When you bring something in for four or five months, that's the common sense use of the word. Commercial parking is allowed, commercial storage is not. He asked if this type of use, commercial parking, would be acceptable in downtown Webster or in any place in town that is owned B4, B5, and suggested that it would not and wasn't likely the intent when that use was adopted into the bylaw. Commercial parking was added as an allowed use, but storage was not. He added that long-term boat storage in the downtown would not be considered acceptable. The board asked for a specific method, the bright line, as you were talking about, to determine the difference between storage and commercial parking. And Mr. Curritzy noted that it is at the discretion of the board, but that they should ask themselves if this type of storage should be considered as an allowed, as of right use for downtown Webster. If the answer is yes, then it is parking. The definition applies to all business districts, and he referenced the fact that the storm bylaw references fleet storage and suggested that they stop playing word games and just call it what it was. He noted that is exactly what is happening on the site, exterior fleet storage. Common sense dictates that this is storage. The board asked about types of vehicles that could be parked in a commercial parking area, vans, boats, that was Mr. Daggett's comment. Mr. Tatro noted that he identified commercial parking as payment for a fee to park a registered vehicle for a period of time. And that's as far as I got at cataloging the meeting. I will go back and continue, and catalog the representation from attorney Paul Foley, who presented a different concept of what he considered to be storage, based on a number of legal cases. But I'm going to have to go through the, I'm going to have to go through the tape to catalog that presentation. You did have a number of people who presented testimony as well, which needs to be cataloged. The people who did present testimony, everyone was opposed to it primarily for the facts, for the reasons that had already been stated by the attorney. You know, this is not what we want for the downtown. This is, this covers all business districts. This wasn't in the intent of the bylaw. Use the common sense approach to determining what is storage versus what is parking. Adding that documentation, adding those extra findings, there'll probably be five or six others, doesn't change the fact that you can move forward with making findings. You do have to make a decision by October 6th. So if you want me to document those findings and you want to look at the final draft, then you'll have to continue this to tomorrow or the 6th to make a decision. So you do have one waiver request. The applicants have asked for a waiver from the application fee. When they submitted the application in the office, I made it clear that we could not waive the abutter fee or the legal ad fee because those are both required by law. The reason for the waiver request was produced in their waiver request letter and Exhibit One, and the argument is that they are aggrieved by the lack of due process by the planning board back in 2014. I'll read the paragraph. We are requesting a waiver, and this is the first of two paragraphs in the letter. The second paragraph was not relevant to the matter at hand, so I didn't include it, but it's available for people to see on the website. We are requesting a waiver of this appeal fee due to the processes in which the original non-conforming use was granted. This recreational vehicle storage was approved in error within a zone that does not allow for such use and which makes it a non-conforming use. During this process in 2014, abutters were not notified under the planning board process 2014 via two subsequent legal notices in the local paper, nor certified mail return receipt requested. There is no supporting documentation on file as to the notifications of the Town of Webster. Due to this lack of process, the abutters did not receive the opportunity to voice any concerns. I can verify that the file does not show any kind of reference to mailings to the abutters at the time. There was a hearing notice published. There was, there was a document that indicated that staff had sent an ad to the Webster Times. There's no verification that it was published or that it was published for two weeks in a row, which is required by law. But that, and that certified mailing is not a requirement. We do that here in Webster specifically, and some towns do it that way because you have a lot of contentious cases out there and we want to ensure that people know. I've had plenty of complaints in my career from people going, I never got my notice. And the certified mailing allows us to verify that they received it. It was not standard practice in 2014, having spent a lot of time going through the old project files. They didn't do that way until I got here. So that's the waiver request. And then you're going to get into having to make a decision about the waiver and a decision about the use.
All right. So the first issue was, do we want to act on this decision tonight? Give Ms. Morgan, or give Ms. Morgan 24 hours to complete the findings, come back tomorrow? I watched the whole video, or at least that portion of the meeting over again when I made my decision, so I am all set unless everybody else wants to have all the findings in front of them. Okay, decide tonight? Okay? All right. Is there a motion? So how should we make this motion, Ms. Morgan, for the findings?
Okay, this is a little unique than your standard variance or special permit application. As best, as I- As best as I could get to the heart of the matter. The finding F-14 points out what was stated, obviously.
I was referring to F-1 through 13.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You could say F-1 to be completed in its entirety, and that will renumber everything that comes after.
All right. All right, is there a motion to accept findings F-1 to be completed in their entirety? Entirety?
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. Did you want to go into the specific findings?
All right, the specific, yeah, this is where, the only one that I could put down in certainty, because Town Council told you, was that the burden of proof regarding the definitions of storage and commercial parking lies with the applicant. So they had to, through the course of the hearing and the documentation they submitted, to give you reason to make a determination that is otherwise different from what the building inspector interpreted. So the burden of proof lies with them. You don't have to, you're not seeking to create something out of what was presented. Did they give you enough information to make a decision, one way or the other? And then F-15 says, you have an option here. The applicant did or did not provide satisfactory definition of storage or commercial parking that could be applied in this case, and refers back to finding F-12, which is the attorney's representation for the neighborhood, talking about using the common sense approach. The applicant suggested the common sense definition of both definitions, but failed to meet that burden. So this is one where you're gonna have to figure out, did they meet their burden in providing you with a clear path to make a decision one way or the other?
So I'm sorry, I'm focusing on F-15 here.
Yeah.
So does there have to be a specific motion for a did or did not satisfy the definition, their definition, definitional burden?
And you can strike that last sentence, because that's confusing to that. That makes no sense.
So does that have to be part of the motion, or is that just a standard that will just be there?
No, that's something for you to, actually, I would recommend taking a roll call vote on each of the following.
Okay. Okay.
Do you want me to?
And F-16, I suppose we can get to that. I didn't have a chance to specifically look at the labeled recreational vehicle, incorrect That's important to this case. I'm drawing a blank why it's important to this case.
So F-16, for the benefit of the audience, finds that while the 2014 site plan may or may not have been incorrectly labeled, may or may not have been correctly labeled, because you don't know, may have been, may or may not have been incorrectly labeled, recreational vehicle storage facility, that the use could at the time have been or not have been classified a commercial parking area as the vehicles are registered and the owners are paying a fee to park their vehicles on their site, which is the determination that the building commissioner made. So what this is getting at, it may not be well worded, is that at the time, the planning board acted in good faith when it approved that site plan, not having any staff advice or guidance, or having any determination from the zoning enforcement officer, that the planning board did go forward in good faith. And that could be revised to reflect that language.
So the could have been, would have been, would be to uphold the building inspector's decision and/or not have been considered would be to find for the applicant on that finding?
All right, one more time?
I said, so on F-16, when we motioned that it could have been classified or could not have been classified as commercial parking, a could have been classified would uphold the building inspector's decision, and a could not have been classified as commercial parking would uphold, would find for the applicant?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Just want to be clear with the motions we have to make.
Yeah, no, no, and this is confusing, this is probably the most complicated case I've worked on with you since I've been here five-plus years.
Okay. All right. And I guess we'll get to the waiver after we decide the first part. All right. Finding F-1, I think that's a pretty straightforward burden of proof requirement, that the burden lies with the applicant. Is there a motion to approve finding F-14?
F-1.
Well, whatever the new number is gonna be.
Whatever the new number.
These numbers are all gonna be different.
We'll just say F-14 as it's presented tonight.
Okay.
Is there a motion to find that the burden lies with the applicant?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. Okay, all right. So the second thing would be the applicant did or did not provide satisfactory definition of storage or commercial parking that could be applied in this case. Is there a motion to find in the affirmative that the applicant did provide satisfactory definition? Just making the motion, this isn't a decision on the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, as for discussion, I'll break from our trend. I actually wrote a fairly lengthy finding. I suppose I have to read it into the record.
And you've typed that up, right?
I did type it up. I did type this up. Seeing that this is the most unique case that I've been a part of, there was also significant thought put into this, and as I said, I watched the meeting again. So this board's been tasked with determining the meaning of the use of parking areas commercial or commercial parking, as the parties in the town have noted several times. The meaning of this use or statutory construction, as advised by Town Council, can be interpreted in one of two manners. First, by its clear and plain language, or second, by its reasonable, by a reasonable interpretation of bylaw, taking into account the nature of the community. At the opinion of Town Council, the interpretation of the building inspector must be given deference, and the applicant, Mr. Valeri in this case, and the Thompson Road Neighborhood Association, bears the burden of proving by preponderance of evidence, or more likely than not, that the definition of the building inspector is unreasonable and incorrect. In my opinion, the applicant and the members of the Thompson Road Neighborhood Association were not persuasive in providing that the building inspector's definition of parking areas commercial was incorrect. The first area that I analyzed was the plain and clear language of the use of parking areas commercials. Here, the building inspector provided his definition of the use as the payment of a fee to park a vehicle for a period of time as long as it is on a trailer and it is registered. The building inspector reasoned that this included boats and personal watercraft, i.e. jet skis, so long as they were registered. Without a persuasive argument by the applicant, this definition must be upheld. The applicant suggests that the board would use, that the board use the word that is first uttered by a person when discussing the matter, whether it be the word parking or storage, and that, and further argues, without providing any basis or substance, that parking and storage are dissimilar usage, where each term can only exist independently of the other. Several other members of the public argued further that the amount of preparation each activity differentiates one term from the other. I find that the applicant failed to provide any legal precedent for his first utterance test to determine the definition of the term, nor was there precedent submitted for a preparation test. I find that each test without such precedent would be arbitrary, unreasonable, whimsical, and capricious use of the board's judgment, and would likely fail upon appeal. The applicant additionally did not provide a referenced dictionary definition of, for the terms parking or storage, when questioned by the board. As noted in many cases involving statutory construction, dictionaries are the usual reference when construing words or phrases to their plain and clear language. The sole reference made by the applicant to a definition was to the website Law Insider. A search of this website for each term, parking and storage, produced over 50 results for each term, making it impossible for myself to determine the specific definition that the applicant had referenced in their application. Without such a reference provided by the applicant or a member of the public, I cannot find that the applicant met his burden in providing, providing by preponderance of the evidence that the building inspector's definition of parking areas commercial is unreasonable. Analyzing this through the reasonable interpretation of the bylaw, the applicant argues that this board should find that the placement of boats be determined within the allowed parking areas commercial, that, find that, placement of boats be determined to be within the allowed use parking areas commercial than any person would be able to store their boat for the winter in any area of Webster, including Main Street. Although a reasonable person may interpret the long-term placement of a boat on Main Street as strange and possibly as being improper, the applicant fails to notice that the town of Webster encompasses a 1,400-acre lake, and that it is a boating community with over 2,500 registered boats. The legislature of the town, i.e. town meeting, had to, had to have considered this when allowing for the use parking areas commercials within Business District 4, because without such consideration, such a use would per se be disallowed within the town of Webster. I find that the applicant's argument against a reasonable interpretation of the incorporation of storage of boats within the use parking areas commercials unpersuasive in rendering the building inspector's definition as being unreasonable and incorrect. Would anybody else like to make a finding?
No, that was good.
We'll make our motions in the affirmative that the applicant did provide satisfactory definition of storage or commercial parking that could be applied in this case. So a no vote, or a yes vote would be that the applicant did, and that would disallow for boat storage or placement or parking, whatever you want to call it, in that area, and a did not would be to uphold the building, or a no vote would be to uphold the building inspector's decision. So is there a motion that the applicant did make a satisfactory?
You already have a motion on record.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I got lost. Yeah, so Ms. Morgan, please pull the board.
Mr. Canoyer?
No.
Mr. Daggett?
No.
Mr. Faels?
No.
Mr. Piattar?
No.
Mr. Piattar, I would recommend that the, what's now labeled F-16 is extraneous and not relevant based on the extent of the finding that you just made. There's no way to interpret, now that I think about it, no way to interpret what people were thinking back in 2014.
Okay. All right, so we will not make finding F-16 as presented. All right, the waiver request. No, we have to go back to, we took each one of these independently, we don't need to make a general motion.
Or?
Specific findings.
No, you just made the two specific findings. You have two.
All right, the waiver request, so the, so you said there was, Ms. Morgan, you said there was a hearing notice. It wasn't mailed out in 2014 by certified mail.
There's no, there was evidence that a hearing notice was published. There was no evidence, but there was evidence that, that a notice was given to the Webster Times. We have no verification as to whether or not that actually happened. There's no way of knowing. The file is very, very thin. Again, this is something that happened under the umbrella of a different board. It's your job to determine whether or not that board was in error or staff was in error. You have to determine whether or not there's enough evidence to demonstrate that anybody was in error, and if you aren't, you're unable to demonstrate that in a solid manner, then you would have to deny the waiver.
All right. And the waiver, how much was the waiver for?
The application was for $300.
$300, all right.
The application fee.
So although there was a hearing notice, and you said it was published?
We can't, we cannot verify that.
It was published, okay. It wasn't certified mailing that went out?
There was no certified mailing. This is for the 2014 Planning Board. They weren't doing certified mailings then.
So taking these in the affirmative, is there a motion to grant the applicant's request for a waiver of the application fee?
Did you want to look at the finding first, or do you want me to strike that finding?
Well, would anybody, well, we could talk, there could be discussion, where we could talk about, suppose if there was or wasn't beforehand.
Yeah.
Anybody care to make a motion that the applicant's request for the application fee, due to the lack of process, should be approved or granted?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
There's a second, okay. Discussion. So the file's thin, certified mail wasn't required, there's no evidence that it was or was not published.
Mr. Chairman, I could, I could pull up, because I do have the 2014 file on the website. If you would like to see the totality of the actual file, because I've scanned everything, and it's all on the website.
Would the board like to see the entire application from the planning board?
I'm ignoring the application, it's just, were they notified or not?
Were they notified, yeah.
Yeah. And again, the file, the file, there's no way to verify whether or not notices went out.
I tend to believe with such a large project that's occurring in a residential area, that somebody would have showed up to question it. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
So I'm inclined to grant the waiver request for $300, the application fee request. Anybody else care to make a finding? All right, hearing none, Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
No.
No, okay, hold on.
I, can you?
Explain what the?
Yes.
The motion is to grant, to grant the waiver, that they gave you enough information to demonstrate that the waiver should be granted. Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes.
Motion fails due to a lack of supermajority vote.
Onto the decision.
I only could, I could only craft one decision based on the zoning determination, and it may need a little reworking, but.
I think it's just a general motion that, that what you wrote down below, that the building inspector was in error. I would stand by my finding that I read.
And this would refer back to the- And this would refer back to that that finding that you had provided. So if somebody wanted to know why, they would go back to that.
Yeah, they, I don't really want to read that again.
Yeah, no.
All right, is there a motion to find that the applicant sufficiently demonstrated that the building commissioner was an error with its determination regarding commercial parking as it relates specifically to the use of site located at 300 Thompson Road? And I'll note here, a no vote would uphold the building inspector's decision, a yes vote would be in favor of the applicant and would prohibit the placement of boats for storage on the property.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All right, I'll stand by my finding that I read earlier. Ms. Morgan, could you please poll the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
No.
Mr. Daggett?
No.
Mr. Faels?
No.
And Mr. Piattar?
No.
All right, is there a motion to direct Ms. Morgan to sign the decision on our behalf?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please poll the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Last draft decision, enforcement order for 300 Thompson Road, and this time 300 LLC is the applicant.
Again, first two sections catalog the documentation received and the procedural background. Getting into the findings, the site in question, 300 Thompson Road is located within the Business Five zoning district, is currently being used for parking, again, that word, started to have an aversion to the word storage, parking of recreational vehicles, specifically boats, jet skis, trailers, and storage of other marine-related materials such as docks and loose pontoons. I'm going to add that in. Let's see, there was a storage shed and a cargo container on the site also used for additional storage. The site is owned by 300 LLC, which is the parent company of Lakeview Marine, which is located across the street and south of the site. On November 10th, 2014, the Webster Planning Board provided a site plan entitled Existing Conditions RV Storage Facility in Details Plan Prepared by B.C. Engineering. No appeal of the planning board's decision was made at that time. The building commissioner received complaints from some neighbors indicating that the uses on the site, including but not limited to, storage of marine-related materials such as docks, loose pontoons, the presence and use of storage shed and cargo container. I'm going to add the word loose in there. After a site visit, the building commissioner issued an enforcement order on June 6, 2022, stating the following, "This office has received complaints regarding the conditions on the property owned by you located at 0 Thompson Road, Webster, Mass. On June 2," that doesn't seem right, it's June, yeah, let's, I'm going to get that date right because I'm going to backcheck that date. Oh, yes, okay. So the letter was issued on June 6. On June 2, an inspection took place and the following violations were observed and need to be addressed immediately. Excessive materials located throughout the property such as dock pieces, miscellaneous pontoons, and a shed slash storage container, all in which are violations of the approved conditions of your original site plan, which allowed the storage of registered recreational vehicles only. It is the determination of this office, you will have 14 days from receipt of this notice to remove all materials that are in violation and cease all activities with the exception of what was approved with the original plan. Failure to do so within the 14-day period, appeal, 14-day period will result in a $50 fine per violation for each day it exists thereafter." Finding F-4, the applicant filed an appeal on June 26, 2022. The appeal application states the following reason for the appeal, "We have filed a modification of an approved site plan that will address the issues." Finding F-5, during the hearing, you asked the building commissioner to provide an overview of his enforcement officer. Mr. Tatro stated that he had received complaints from the neighbors about the use of the property for activities that may or may not have been approved by the Webster Planning Board in 2014. He conducted a site inspection and found that there were several violations, including but not limited to, storage of miscellaneous docks, loose pontoons, other storage and other storage of miscellaneous, other storage of miscellaneous materials. Sorry, there was a typo. These uses were not approved by the Webster Planning Board in 2014. He then proceeded to issue an enforcement order. The board asked when the when the fines were scheduled to begin, to which the answer was June 2022. You asked if any effort had been made by the applicant to resolve the violations, to which the answer was no. It was noted that the board does not have the authority to waive or dispense of fines issued by the building commissioner. And that's, that's an important point of order for reasons we'll get into later. During the public hearing, the board asked the applicant to appeal, to present their appeal. The applicant is represented by attorney Paul Foley. He stated that the use of the site and what is allowed should be made by the planning board and that there was an open application presently before that board. Some of the uses cited by the building commissioner are accessory to the use approved by the planning board. Special Town Council for the Zoning Board of Appeals, Jason Tallerman, noted that there cannot be two primary uses on the site. If the planning board approved the site plan with a specific use, then that's the primary use. All other uses are considered secondary. The Zoning Board of Appeals needs to determine if the offensive uses cited in the enforcement order are consistent with the original site plan approved by the planning board. During the public hearing, the board reviewed the approved site plan. It shows the parking of boats and jet skis. The board asked if it was reasonable to consider the other uses cited in the enforcement order as incidental to this approved use shown on the approved site plan, to which Mr. Foley stated yes, that loose pontoons, tool storage, and the like were incidental uses that had accrued on the site over time. During the hearing, the board heard testimony directly from the applicant Rory Duquette. Mr. Duquette noted that there was a discussion in the 2014 Planning Board meeting about the uses to be located on the site, including some of the uses now called into question. He stated that the planning board was aware that there would be more than just boats and jet ski storage, which appear on the approved plan. He noted that the discussion does not appear in the meeting minutes, and I can verify that's true. We have copies of that. There's no record of that. Mr. Duquette has submitted a new site plan which details all the uses on the site along with an expansion plan of the facility. The application is currently before the planning board, who is waiting for a determination of the use of the site from the Zoning Board of Appeals. That appeal is under a separate application. The board asked Mr. Duquette if he considered the extra uses not approved by the planning board to be accessory to the parking of boats, to which he said yes. During the hearing, testimony from Kristen and Doug Valery, 298 Thompson Road, was received. The Valerys disagree with the Ducats' assessment that the planning board approved uses beyond parking of boats and jet skis, as there is no documentation, there's a spelling, as there is no documentation to prove that assertion. They noted that there are loose pontoons, docks, and unregistered tractor and other storage presently on site, none of which was approved by the planning board in 2014. Then the board notes that it received correspondence from the Thompson Road Neighborhood Association Exhibits Two and Three, collected opposition to the proposed expansion of 300 Thompson Road by abutting neighbors for the public record. No additional verbal testimony was taken during the public hearing. And then, then you get into the, to the specific findings.
Okay.
Which, I'll take a break for a minute.
Is there a motion to accept findings F-1 through F-11 as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please poll the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
Mr. Piattar?
Yes.
All right, our specific findings.
Okay, I'd like to come up with one. The board finds that after review of the 2014 site plan approved by the Webster Planning Board, let's be specific, by Webster P.B., and the existing conditions that, and I would do the existing conditions that are cited in the enforcement order, enforcement order, are are not violations of the approved site plan as follows, and there's room for you to add your own. So what you're basically trying to do here is to determine whether or not the, what's happening out on the site right now is an actual violation of the 2014 site plan. If you decide by motion that it is in violation, then the enforcement order stands and the fines will be backdated to June 20. If you decide, and you'll get that into the decision part, I mean, you could, you could just jump to the, straight to the decision on this if you don't want to make a specific finding.
Well, I think we can make findings once we get to our decision.
Okay.
I think just not to, we're taking repetitive motions on the ultimate issue over and over again.
Mm-hmm.
Just kind of cut to the chase. I think with the, with the enforcement order, you know, I think looking at the standard is, you know, so we, you know, as the advice of council, the council said there can only be one primary use. And the question is, are the uses of storing dock pieces, miscellaneous pontoons, and the placement of a shed and storage container accessory to parking areas commercials? I don't know how you park a dock. And I think the building inspector was pretty clear when he said it, a vehicle that's registered, obviously, we don't register, well, we do have Chapter 91, but we don't register them in the same sense as you register a boat or a car. Pontoons, my logic's the same, you don't register it, and you, obviously, you can't, I don't think you can park a pontoon. Shed or storage container, that's a, that's a structure. That's not a vehicle. So I'm inclined that to uphold the building inspector's determination and find here that the applicant didn't provide satisfactory reasoning for lifting the enforcement order and that his site plan is in violation of some of the conditions that were approved by the planning board in 2014. Anybody else care to make a finding? All right, so is there a motion to find that the applicant provided a satisfactory reason for lifting the enforcement order for violations associated with the 2014 site plan for 300 Thompson Road? So a yes vote would be to allow for the storage of dock pieces, miscellaneous pontoons, and the shed to continue. A no vote would be to uphold the building inspector's decision.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please poll the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
No.
Mr. Daggett?
No.
Mr. Faels?
No.
And Mr. Piattar?
No.
Okay, so I don't know if you need this.
Yeah, so the violations associated would be to, yeah, so that would be a motion to uphold the building inspector's enforcement order for any and all of the violations associated with the 2014 site plan for 300 Thompson Road. This is there, we'll act on it. Somebody make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Just for some confusion, it's the same, same, a no vote would be to uphold the building inspector's, actually, this would be the opposite, motion to uphold the building inspector's enforcement order. So a yes vote would be for upholding his enforcement order, a no vote would be for the applicant here.
Okay.
All right, we're all clear?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Morgan, could you please?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
Mr. Piattar?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to direct Ms. Morgan to sign the decision on our behalf?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes.
Okay, that is it for 300 Thompson Road.
And those are all your decisions for tonight. Now you have two hearings.
All right, we have, we do have two other applications, so if, if you wouldn't mind exchanging pleasantries out in the hallway. Special permit application for the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure to install a mudroom at 50 Union Point Road. Mr. Daggett, could you read the public hearing notice?
Just want to make sure I got the right one. Yeah, I want to make sure I got the right one. This is Kenneth.
Starting to look like me with it out here.
Yeah, I should have brought my glasses. Yeah, all right. In accordance with the provision of the Webster Zoning Bylaw, Section 650-11B and Section 650-28, the Webster Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on a special permit application for the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure to add a new mudroom, covered walkway, and carport at property located at 50 Union Point Road, assessors ID 58-A-56. The application was submitted by Kenneth and Kathy Goulet, 50 Union Point Road, Webster, Mass., 01570, applicant owner. Said site is located in a lake residential in Lake Water Shed Protection zoning districts.
Actually, is there a staff report?
I can give you a brief overview.
Yeah, sure, please.
This is the existing conditions. There is currently a mudroom here that is within the setback, but it's pre-existing non-conforming. The applicants would like to create a mudroom, I think that's a porch, create a mudroom out of what's now an existing porch, and to include...
Sir, you have to leave the door slightly open. Or you could close it some, but you can leave it, it has to be open partly.
So it was determined that in order to create a mudroom out of that existing structure that's within the setback, which is pre-existing non-conforming, a special permit was required. The, when the application came in, it included now a walkway, which somebody used AutoCAD to do this, so the walkway is right here, which also is under consideration for the special permit because it is now a structure that's connected, it's a covered walkway. Then they want to add this garage. And that was, that's problematic for the application because there's required setback based on the calculations done within 300 feet, doesn't allow that garage without a front yard setback variance. So they would have to come back, front yard and side yard setback variance as well. No, the side yard setback variance, we'd have to look at that. I've spoken with the applicant, they're aware that two applications are going to be required at the time that they submit for the front yard setback variance for the garage. It would be in their best interest to, at the same time and on the same application, so it's not duplicate files, also add for the fact that they're going to need a side yard setback also because...
Side yard, I mean, they're already within the side yard by the 5.7, so they're expanding the non-conformity.
But they, they'll need a variance for the front yard setback.
Yeah, they're going to... Yeah, they're going to need one for the front yard for the 354 because you said that setback, how far?
That setback, the, the proposed garage doesn't meet the, the standard set by Section 650, the, that 300 foot measurement.
Yeah, the calculation.
So, yeah, and I'm not quite sure how they want to proceed on that. I guess that's up to them to decide how they want to proceed. Because i-if you were to approve the garage as part of the special permit application, which is before you, and then you get the application for the variance for the front yard setback, and they don't, they don't match up, or there's a problem with that, that could put the special permit piece into jeopardy. So I guess it all boils down to whether or not they want to construct the garage right now. So you'll have to ask them, if they want to construct the garage right now, then you'll have to deal at decision time on how you want to handle that as part of the special permit, just the special permit.
Right.
If they decide that they're going to hold off and do the garage later, then they could file a joint application for the special permit and the front yard setback variance and cover it all at once.
All right. All right. Mr. Goulet?
Goulet.
Goulet?
Yeah.
Okay, please.
All right, no, up here.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind turning on the microphone, too, we're being recorded, so no one will hear you if you, yeah, there you go. So before you start, so procedurally, the town opinion's that you're going to need a variance application. I think it makes more sense if we hear everything all at once. So I think the idea would be if you had, you would probably sign an extension for this decision, file the variance application, we could come back, combine both applications. Am I correct?
That's correct. And in a case like this where we, you, you could vote to waive their application fee for that variance, and the town would assume the expense for re-notifying for the variance as well, because the abutters would have to be re-notified, and, and we, the town can cover that expense because it should have been bundled into this. So that's partially staff error.
So, so partially staff error. I'd rather hear them all at once.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
Yep.
Just do it all at one time.
Yep.
Yeah.
At the next year.
That would be in October, so November, early November, we meet, and it's really, your project's not going to be delayed at all because the variance is going to be holding you up anyways.
Right, right.
So I think for the conciseness of it, you know, we don't want to hear, you know, property after property after property. We have, we have enough of those already.
It's going to be a carport, not a garage. I don't know if it makes a difference.
Yeah, you know, you could get some, give you some more time to get, you know, maybe some exterior drawings.
We have all the drawings set up.
Um, yeah, but I, but I think that would probably be the best way is if we motioned to continue this.
And, and then the setback was, I think it's, we were proposing 35 feet, and I think, Anne, you said it was 46 or something like that, is...
Yeah, there is a calculation that she does based on the nearest structure to the road within 300 feet of your property.
So that would be the variance that we're asking.
That's for the variance, so you said it was 44 feet, you said?
Forty. I, I think it's 46.
Forty-six, so you're asking for 11.
And 35.
You're asking for 11 feet. Yep, okay.
All the neighbors within us are all within that time, you know, it's, there's only two, two houses that said it, you know, put that calculation way off.
Yeah, we can take that testimony, like I said, in November if that's, you know, but we have to have a motion to waive the application notification fee.
You can actually waive that at the time. I won't collect any, any fees, and that'll be part of your decision for the variance.
So does the applicant have a, he would need to, are we up against a timeline for extensions?
Let me see, well, I, I would have to, I'd have to calculate that. This is how I do it. Let's see. The application was received on 8/11, so here we go. Eight, dash, plus 100 days. You are required to, so on November 19th, there's plenty of time to get the...
We'd have to have a decision by then, so we'd have to have a extension to go to November, to December.
Extension to the December meeting.
To the December meeting, okay.
So I can work with Mr. Goulet to fi-sign that form to extend the decision deadline for the special permit. Actually, wait a minute. No, the special permit, oh, that's different. Special permits, you are, you're required to open your hearing within 65 days, which you did, and then you have 90 days after the time of decision for special permit. So there is no hard 100-day rule here.
Okay.
Oh, good.
So there is an extension.
Come back in November.
Yeah, you come back in November, yeah. There's, there's, we work with mainly special permits and variances, and there's different timelines for each one. The variance one is more stringent, you know, 100 days from the date you, we receive the application to when it has to be closed. Special permits, we have to open it within a certain amount of time, but that we can, once we open, we could essentially leave it open for a lot longer, and once we make a decision, then it has to be, was, decision has to be made 65 days after, 65 days after we close the public hearing.
Yeah.
So in November, we come back, we could stop work in another month?
Right, so for you, so for you...
The main thing was the mudroom. We're trying to get that in before the winter. We're hoping to get that in before...
So the, if we open the public, if, or if we take testimony, we close the public hearing for your special permit, there would be a decision rendered in, uh...
Early December.
Early December, yeah.
And then there's a 20-day appeal period after that.
So you're, you're essentially, you're at New Year's either way.
Okay.
Like I said, for us, I think it's more succinct if we hear everything all at once.
Yeah.
Makes our lives easier, that way we don't have two applications in front of us.
That would...
All right, so is there a motion to continue this to our November meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Cunayer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right, we'll see you in November.
See you in November.
Okay, so Ken, let, let's be in touch. I can, by the end of this week, get it advertised, post the public hearing notice for the variance application, and get the mailing out, because it'll be the same abutters list. I can take all that, I'm going to need the form from you, and I'll send it to you. Let's talk tomorrow. We'll figure it all out. You're welcome.
All right. Variance application for 4 Kenneth Ave. Mr. Daggett?
In accordance with the provision, provisions of the Webster zoning bylaw, Section 650-11C, the Webster Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on a variance application for relief from side yard, the side yard setback requirements to install an in-ground pool at the property located at 4 Kenneth Avenue. The application was submitted by Ambassador Pool Distributors, Inc., 1020 Turnpike Street, number 11, Canton, Mass., and Miranda and Michael Wright?
Yeah, I have a Miranda.
Okay. 4 Kenneth Ave, Webster, Mass., owner. Said site is located, Lake Residential, Lake Water Shed Protection zoning district.
All right, is there a staff report?
There is not.
All right. Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Would you care to tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
Um, so...
Oh, at the...
So... So, we're looking to install a pool, so I was trying to do, like, so, can I use some of the video? Sorry.
Yes, we have a picture right in front of us.
Yeah, we're looking at what the... We're looking at it.
Yeah, so...
Oh, okay. So I don't know how you guys see it, like, the fence, is that the red line, the fencing?
The fence is at five feet, and the pool is at seven feet from the, this is what was given to me by the pool company.
Yep. So I was trying to have it where the, the pool was like five feet from the sideline, the fencing, but I was told it had to be 10 feet.
Yep.
So I'm trying, I did the variance for five feet.
All right. So the big question's why?
So if I go 10 feet, then it goes, it interferes where we, I have a fire pit that's, and then I also have a shed.
Okay, so there's a structure there.
Yes.
So where is the structure on this map? I'm trying to...
Is it over here?
Do you have a, Anne, do you have like a, can we look at the G, yeah, the GS, G.I.S.?
Damn.
I was a little consumed with...
I have a picture on my phone.
Yeah, I was a little consumed with 300 Thompson Road before this meeting, so...
Took a lot out of you.
Okay.
Watching that meeting was brutal. Or re-watching it.
Okay.
I do have a...
Okay, let's see if we can get a better look. So here's the fire pit.
Yep, there's the fire pit, and then because the tree's in the way, there's a shed in the back that can't be moved because it's electric, it's electrical and everything else that's built into it.
All right.
Is it right up against the fence?
No, it's not right against the fence. It's like two, it's like three feet maybe away from the fence.
Yeah.
It was, it was there when we purchased the home. I just purchased the home two years ago.
So is the, is the shed here?
Nope, it's in the middle.
Right through that red line.
Yeah, in the back, in the back, up against the fence.
In the back.
Oh, back here.
No.
No, okay.
Am I figured it out?
Yeah.
So it's smack through this red line right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So there's nothing in here?
No, there's nothing in here. There's a fire pit here, so I was looking to put the, and I can't see because my finger's on here.
You can...
Oh, it shows up there?
Yeah. We're looking at the same image. Well, we can't see your finger, but we, but you could, you could come, you could come right up, you can come right up there.
Oh, careful.
Oh, careful, yeah, careful, careful.
So the shed is...
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a tree right here, so the shed is right in between here, and there's the fire pit. So I was looking to go five feet from this fence in here, because if I go 10 feet, then it gets, that's smack in the middle of the yard, and it'll interfere with the, the fire pit, and it'll be smack in the middle of the entrance of the shed.
All right, so...
Yeah, if, if we move it 10 feet, it really blocks the entrance to the shed, so we have to move the pool toward the house, which falls right on the permanent fire pit.
Yeah, the fire pit's like a permanent in place type of thing.
Right, so it's like cemented in?
Yeah.
Can you move it? Okay.
And I have a thing with things being...
Is there anything unique about the soil, the elevation?
No, it's flat everywhere. No, it's flat everywhere.
And there's a big wooden fence, so no one sees it anyway.
Yeah, the whole yard I have fenced in. It's six feet on the side that I'm going to have the pool, and then the other side I have a five-foot fence we put in, and then two in the front.
And actually, it's not an in-ground, it's actually a both ground.
Okay.
Oh.
Yeah, that has a deep, that's going to have a deep end in it, it's just how the pool is made.
Um...
Actually, I can show you.
So moving the fire pit?
Actually, I think I have it.
I can show you this picture here, though.
There we go. That's the pool brochure that was submitted by the pool company.
That's the fire pit, that's, no, it's going right in the back.
Yeah, so that's the shed, so I was gonna, this looks like it's closed, but this is the side where I was going to put the pool.
All right.
This helps.
That helps.
Oh, yeah, we have to, once you give it to me, I have to keep it, though. Okay.
Got it.
Got it? Does that make sense?
All right.
Can you see it? Just so it helps.
Because if it's at five feet, we catch just the corner of the shed. If we move it, we're right in the middle.
It'll be right in between the two doors.
Great, okay.
And I have a problem with that because I can't visually see the door.
So this is not to scale.
Kind of, but...
It's missing the shed.
Yeah.
Huh?
All right. And obviously, moving the fire pit will be a financial hardship?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and then the shed, too?
The shed, yeah, because that's all electrical and everything. It's not one of those movable type sheds.
So besides, kind of silly, but besides kids splashing around and having fun, no noise, dust, or debris, you know?
Oh, no, no, no. The worst part's going to be the trees getting into the, the leaves getting into the pool, but...
Well, you'll have fun cleaning it, okay.
And my kids are grown, so other than that.
All right.
And this has, this pool will have a fence around it as well, so it has a...
Any, Ms. Morgan, any comments from abutters?
Nope, no comments or town departments.
Anything from police, fire, no, nothing? Okay, I have nothing else.
I've got nothing.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing for the variance application for, for Kenneth Ave?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Cunayer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. Okay, so there'll be a decision drafted, and we will decide next, our, our next meeting in November, November 1st.
Wait till November.
Yeah, you gotta wait till November.
Okay, that's fair enough.
You have to put off your ice skating for, on top of your pool, so...
No, no worries. I waited this long.
You'll be ready for, you'll be ready for the summer, though.
Yeah, I waited this long, no worries.
Okay.